Hello again, I'm Doug Smith and welcome to the 17 April 2015 edition of Portsmouth This Week, the voice of Portsmouth Town Hall. My guests today are from the Portsmouth School Committee and we have Chairperson Terry Cortfran. Terry, welcome. And also a school committee member and also clerk of the school committee, Tom Vatney. Welcome, Tom, to the show.
Thank you for having us.
You've recently submitted your budget proposal to the town council, which they dearly loved for reasons we'll talk about. I'd like to discuss that and some of the other ongoing initiatives that you all are doing. But I wonder first if we could discuss the basics about the school committee. How many members? How it's elected? What it does?
We're a seven-member body and half the board is elected every two years. So it's a four-year term, but we alternate half and half so that there's always continuity on the board.
Okay, well, three and four, is that how it works?
Yeah, three and four, right.
Okay. And what are your responsibilities? As I recall, looking at the documents, it's a pretty serious charge you guys have.
Our most important responsibility is hiring the superintendent and then establishing policy and finance budgeting. Those are our three major roles.
Yes, and overseeing.
Yes, and overseeing that those policies and the budget is implemented properly.
And essentially, you guys report to the people of Portsmouth because you're all elected officials, so you have an official role there, too.
Absolutely.
I think it's quite a job description. If people want to go online and take a look online to the town or the school website, you can link to both, either one from either one. To look at your mission statement, it's quite impressive. Are there any members that have like an education background or are in education or have been in education?
Our vice chair, Emily Copeland, is an adjunct professor at Bryant in political science.
Yes.
Okay. And Tom, you were talking earlier about training that you all have to go through.
The state mandates that all school committee members take six hours of professional development every year. Now, our particular school committee, we go as a group and we actually go way beyond that mandate. We go to practically every event that's offered. So we do spend a lot of our Saturdays together and discussing the latest education issues that come through the Rhode Island Association School Committee.
Yeah, I think you guys had some kind of training this week already, as I recall.
Tom and I yesterday went to a training of the New England Association of-
Government Finance Officers.
Finance Officers. And we were invited by Jim Lathrup to attend and the deputy, well, the new interim finance director for the town, and Tom and I were the only ones from Portsmouth in attendance.
You learn about such topics as bond issues and compliance.
Probably more than each-
Gatsby.
Yes, Gatsby and new Gatsby, coming out on OPEB and a few other interesting topics. And I'm sure finance kind of-
A million acronyms is what you say.
Yes, it was pretty interesting.
Well, that's good. That's good background for anybody that might be interested in getting on the school committee at some point.
Yes.
Let's go to the budget request. I know the town council and I think all citizens in Portsmouth were delighted that you're able to submit a budget with no real increase over the last year. People should know that they can see the entire budget plus the budget presentation plus the strategic plan of the Portsmouth School Department online. They're available at both the town's website and also on your website. And I would encourage citizens, particularly those with an interest in the school system, to go and take a look at that because it's pretty important stuff. But I wonder if you could highlight some of the key elements that you think are important from this budget.
Well, I think coming up with the savings and the zero increase really took having a new superintendent, take a look at everything line by line with each principal, each school, to come up with different ways of thinking about how to approach education in the schools. And I think that's how we were able to incur some of the savings. And then the special education insourcing is probably our big, major initiative.
Yeah, actually, I wanted to ask you about that because I know that decision was made, what, four, five, six months ago, I guess, to opt out of the East Bay Collaborative? I wonder if you could give us some background on that decision? Why do we do it?
We had been looking at it because we felt like that we weren't really getting a great return for our dollar in terms of accountability, transparency, control of the budget, even educational outcomes. We hired a group, the Futures Group?
Yes, they specialize in special education, I think.
They audited our relationship and made a recommendation that they thought we could financially do better, and that was the basis of our decision.
Okay, so we think essentially we can do a better job ourselves for less money.
Yes.
Right, well, the goal was to do the better job for the same money because on paper, you should save money being in a regional arrangement. But unfortunately, the way that the accounting worked, we ended up subsidizing some of the other members' school districts. So money that would otherwise go to Portsmouth kids were not. So though it's more expensive to do it on our own, it's at the same time less expensive. And I think we'll see a better product with educational outcomes.
I think that's the main thing, yes.
And that was the goal. The money that we saved, which was about a half a million, I believe, Terry, is just sort of icing on the cake.
Yes.
Just a kind of statistic that stuck out to me anyway, it was in your presentation, I think. We spend about $1,000 less per student than the statewide average. And then the next thing that was projected was that what that translates into is about a $2.5 million savings over the S- I thought that was quite incredible. So I think your finance director is doing a tremendous job, apparently.
Now, a few years ago, one of our previous superintendents attended this national event and she came back with a little factoid. They had done a survey and found that Portsmouth schools were rated the best bang for the buck in Rhode Island, that we were producing the best outcome for the amount of dollars being put in. So the taxpayers are definitely gaining value out of our schools.
It's those kind of little soundbite things, I think, are important to get out there because it shows you're doing an efficient and effective job. One of the largest expense probably, and this is probably true for all New England towns, is infrastructure. You know, and I know one of the proposals or a major expenditure is for the schools is upkeep, trying to keep those old 30-year-old boilers working so that the kids can go to school in a safe environment. It's been estimated about $2.6 million, and this was approved by you guys last week. And the bulk of this would come from the school fund surplus, which is, that whole fund surplus issue is kind of a difficult topic for people to understand. But I wonder if you could discuss the issue and the need for this boiler repair, this expensive-
Oh, absolutely. The surplus has been growing over the last several years. I think most of it was the result of closing Elmhurst, and it's just accrued.
Okay, so we got some savings for that.
Yes, yes, and I don't know that everybody was sure exactly where those savings, you know, how they were going to shake out because the teachers moved. But I think in the end, it did provide a significant savings to have that school off the, you know, the maintenance of the school and off the books. So the surplus has accrued over time. And the boilers, we have, I think, the oldest boiler is at the middle school and I think it's 70 or 80 years old. It's way past its useful life.
Really?
Yes, and so it's been the hard work of our maintenance department that has kept these boilers going, but there are mornings that they come in and they have trouble getting them started. So we just feel like we're on our last legs and we do have this surplus that we don't think it would be wise to put it into operational expenses because that would create a deficit down the road. So the boiler project just looks like it's a great opportunity to upgrade all those systems, system-wide, so all the boilers and all the schools would be upgraded in addition to some lighting that provides a really good return on energy savings. It's a whole package that we've put together with the consultants from National Grid through a program that actually President Hamilton encouraged us to explore. So it seems like a good time and there's a lot of incentives coming from the state to embark on this at this time, and then that would seem like a good use of funds.
It is something you kind of have to do.
You do.
You know, it's just like the roads in this town. You know, a couple of years ago, we had no road maintenance, funded at least, which was kind of silly when you think about it, and you have to pay attention to that. One of the articles that I read in the Newport Daily News about that decision also reflected, you know, there's this issue of the town wanting to get some of that surplus money to use in the general fund, et cetera. The article in the Newport Daily News showed that this would be a way because of some rebates and some other things from the state that might come back actually to the town. So it might be a way, kind of a bleak way of getting some of these dollars back into the town. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, well, right now, what you do is when you put in projects, there's, of course, the usual bureaucracy, you get put on the forums and get approvals. Now, some items are, the boilers are probably the key issue for the rebate, is that are they considered an upgrade or are they considered a health and safety issue? I believe if they're health and safety, we can get a rebate on that. If they consider the maintenance issue an upgrade, then we don't. Now, for example, the lighting, that's an upgrade and we're getting a rebate from National Grid, but the RIDE won't participate in that. So it really depends on what RIDE decides. We do expect to see a rebate, but the amount will be determined on how they judge these projects, how it fits into the various categories.
Okay, RIDE is the Rhode Island Department of Education.
Education.
Yeah, they oversee the school program.
Are they an elected body as well? I wonder, RIDE?
No.
No. Now, they are overseen by the Commission on Education, which was combined from upper education 12K a few years ago. But as they operate day-to-day, it's Commissioner of Education oversees that. Right now, that's Commissioner Gaskin.
But I thought it was interesting that your finance director was kind of, you know, looking for ways to do this the right way, to get that surplus so it could be kind of recycled and stuff.
Right, the town will be getting a return on the money that we spent on the tennis courts, too, because that was a pre-approved project under Health and Safety and was approved by RIDE. So the money that, as part of that T3 project for the tennis courts, there's a portion that will be coming back to the town.
And as the Newport Daily News article, Jim Johnson does a great job on these things, I think, said, this is a legal way for the town to get part of that without changing the law, which probably won't happen anyway. Another decision you made last week, which I thought was interesting, I was looking through both the article and some other things on school committee issues, was a policy you approved, a policy allowing video surveillance on school property. And I guess I was surprised that there isn't already some kind of surveillance, just for safety reasons, if nothing else. Can you give us some background on that decision? Do we have a significant issue here with safety or anything?
We put cameras in a while ago and then we had some software issues, but when we had the bomb scares at the high school, that's when cameras, we did install some at the high school, and then we expanded that out to the other schools. But what we did the other night was updated the policy because we put in some new software because we were having problems with the initial software package that came with the cameras. So we're using the existing cameras but a new software package, and we just wanted to get our policy up to date.
Okay.
I think the first one was a bit cumbersome and involved a bit more bureaucracy, and this now gives it, I guess, or streamlines it for the superintendent. It just makes it easier for day-to-day.
All the oversights by the-
By the superintendent. That was spelled out pretty clearly.
Yeah, but right now, I think the main threat and I think the main benefit is just vandalism. We've had incidents over the years.
Absolutely.
So that's really what it's for right now. I mean, it does offer other security benefits, but there are other measures that we take in addition.
I know the conspiracy theorists are out there, you know, it's big government watching you and all that stuff. But the thing is, I think if it helps keep our kids safe, we should be looking into it.
And our property safe.
And our property, too, yeah, absolutely. You also agreed last week to establish a truancy division program, and I guess this is going to be known as the truancy court in the school district. Do we have a significant truancy problem in Portsmouth?
I don't think it's significant, but I don't think with the problems that we do have, we haven't really been pursuing them as proactively as we could have been. And the way we have to do it now entails sending families. It follows a whole series of, you know, through the school efforts, but then it ends up in family court, and this would allow families not to have to go to family court. We could deal with this right internally in the school building.
In the school department.
So the judge comes to us, and I think it will be in the high school library, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's easier on families, it's really.
Okay, and I think Middletown and Newport already have that, don't they?
Yeah, I think we had one at one time, too, and I don't know if it went out of favor for some reason or another, so we're just bringing it back.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting, coming up with the same time as the surveillance thing. I didn't know that there's any relation.
Just totally coincidental, I think.
I think of two benefits. Well, one, it's free, so we're not paying anything for it. But I think it prevents keeping the kids out of the formal system. I think that's important because if they're having a truancy issue, there's obviously other issues behind it, and we want to keep as much space between them and the system. Because once they go in that system, then it's very difficult to pull yourself back out.
Yeah, anything we can do to try to keep kids safe these days would be a good thing, I think. Just from a citizen's perspective, which is basically what I am here in this discussion, is I think it appears to me that relations between the school department and the town council and the town administration have improved greatly over the last couple of years, which I think is a really good thing. I mean, I think we need more dialogue and discussion. And I like the idea of joint meetings to discuss budgets and things like that so they get the stuff out of the way before it has to go, before the formal approval process. How would you characterize this relationship and how important do you think it is going forward to continue to improve that?
I think it's very important, and it's equally important for the superintendent to work with the town administrator. And unfortunately, the way it worked out, Mr. Clem had kind of made a decision to move on right about the same time Anna had come on board, so they really haven't had a whole lot of, you know, even probably in practical purposes, incentive to get into a real relationship because they both knew they were leaving. So I think it will be very important for the next town administrator coming on and the superintendent to form a relationship.
Yeah, I think citizens like to see all these groups working together.
Together, sure, sure. More communication, less politics.
Absolutely. One of the issues, and this is kind of a segue from my questions, but has to do with IT and technology. I know Keith Hamilton would like to see, as the town council has been trying to get for the last couple of years, some support from the schools in a way of IT because, mainly because there's no budget for IT in the town council and the town hall, which is kind of their fault. But is there any chance of this? I know your IT people are probably already working full-time, but how do you look at that IT issue from your perspective?
Well, we don't, right, we don't have people sitting around doing nothing, on one hand, but we do have the expertise that we think could be a benefit to the town. And so we would like the town council to look and the town administration to look to the schools more for their expertise and maybe supporting if they have a, you know, a part-time person or something, you know, we could offer the level of expertise. And then we also talked about over the summer months, they have funded some upgrades that our IT department recommended.
Okay, so they have worked together already?
Well, I think they've put some funds in this upcoming budget, and we were anticipating over the summer months to be able to help implement some of those upgrades. And Tom's chair of the IT department, so I should really turn this over to you, Tom.
Well, there are two issues. The first issue is the current state of the town, and not to get into details.
The town IT?
The town IT, which really is just a hodgepodge of various pieces of equipment and things like that. But before we can come in and provide any sort of service, you have to meet a certain level of technology. So the two issues is, one is to come in, upgrade, replace equipment, put in the appropriate equipment that you need, licenses for software. Then the second is to negotiate some sort of contract for service. And so, you know, what level? Does a third-party provider come in and provide that sort of everyday tech support? Does the school supply that? And those are, but they're two separate issues. The first issue, I think we're pretty much in agreement that they do need hardware upgrades to get their software license issues set up. And then after that, I would assume after the new town administrator comes in, I would like to wait until that person is to say, what's your vision for IT? What level service you want and what, you know, what type of money you'd like to put into that.
I think when John Clem came here from the Cape, he had a seven-person IT department. And he came down and, where's my IT person? We don't have one. So that's an issue. And the thing is, IT is playing such an important role everywhere. One of the places in the school, I understand you're the kind of honcho of the bring-your-own-device program or whatever you call it? How's that working out?
Well, right now, it's working. We have, the IT department has notified me that they set up a virtual network that runs on top of the regular network. So the BYOD, all of these devices are, our little students are bringing in, or I like to call them our hackers, are running on a network that is isolated from the core school network.
Okay.
And right now, they're generally being used for doing classroom quizzes, taking polls, assigning homework, things like that. Kids will use their cameras to take pictures of the boards, things like that. And there are a few teachers, I believe about 10, I was told, that have taken that beyond that and fully integrated it into their curriculum. Now, one issue that we have here is that you introduce new technology, new methods, but there's no professional development behind that. So right now, to sort of move that forward, we're starting to look at ways that we can, well, sort of bring both the teachers and the students along because though students are tech-savvy, we found other school departments are experiencing to say that it's in more the entertainment side of the business rather than the professional education side. So both sides need to be trained a bit more to make it.
Now, when you say bring your own device, you're talking about like what?
Phones, computers, anything you like.
Some kind of tablet?
Tablet, yes. And most kids use phones, I believe, and tablets.
Yeah.
And but this will be the springboard to what we hope will be a one-to-one initiative. And we're not too sure how that's going to look.
Could you guys partner with Apple or somebody, or some company like Microsoft? Get a bunch of free computers?
Well, we're being very careful about this because we have looked at other school districts. Los Angeles school department spent about $8 million on iPads and that didn't quite work out for them. And so we are taking the cautious approach, looking at various technologies, Chromebooks, you know, maybe traditional laptops, whether there's some sort of parent program where they would buy the equipment off of our bid list, get a discount, or we provide it for the students. We're not too sure how that's going to work. This is very preliminary, and we're trying to be cautious because you can make very expensive mistakes.
I can see, I mean, yeah, you know, trying to get an iPad for everybody in the school would be kind of expensive.
And they're easy to break and all those kind of things.
But that's good, and we should do a program sometime just on technology and the schools because I think there's a lot of meat there.
Oh, there is.
One other issue that I need to talk about, and it's a tough one, it's PARC testing, the testing that's been going on. And I guess the issue seems to be basically some pushback from people who, for some reason, don't want their kids, or maybe it's the kids telling their parents they don't want to take this test. I was amazed, though, that even in Tiverton, where a lot of people kind of opted out, some people actually wanted to take it on paper rather than on a computer. I mean, what is, you know, so I guess my question is, what is our policy on PARC? I understand it's pretty clear-cut.
We, yes, there is no opt-out policy. There were some parents that sent letters in requesting that their child not take the test. And then there were some kids that just chose not to take the test, but I think many of them have signed up for a makeup test. And so there really is no opt-out. The SAT is going to be formulated on the PARC somewhere between 2017 and 2020. This will become a graduation requirement in Portsmouth, so it's really to the kids' benefits to take the PARC. So, and this year, it didn't count for anything.
Especially now, I mean, it's-
Yes, so it was really to everybody's benefit that they participate and get the practice in, you know, since when do kids just decide that, I don't want to take a test?
Yeah, well, it seems like part of the issue is, you know, who designed the test and where the questions are coming from. And the thing is, wouldn't you want it designed by the best people in the country? I mean, you know, rather than just me and my school district, I want to ask them these questions? I mean, it seems to me that it's kind of a no-brainer.
We've been talking for years about how we have to be more competitive with other countries, and it was a governor's-ish initiative under Bush to go embark on the common core standards, and it teaches the kids more of critical thinking skills.
I guess the only thing that bothers me is there seems to be some, a little bit of pushback from teachers because of, probably because of being forced to kind of teach to the test or something, I don't know.
There's also a component that the tests may be used as part of their evaluations.
Evaluations, I think that's more the issue.
I think that's really more the issue on the teacher's side.
Well, anyway, that's something we're going to keep an eye on, but I just, I can't imagine why somebody would not, would opt out of something as important as this for kids in their future.
Well, I think this is more fear-driven from what I see.
It could be, and you know, it's probably like any test. I mean, you know, you ask yourself, can my child pass that test that gets them into college and gets them out of high school? But I mean, that's the whole point of going to school, isn't it? I mean, to learn something.
I mean, for me, the most cynical thing you could say about the PARC test is it's just another standardized test. They change about every 10 years. And I don't really, well, the big difference, I think, between this and other tests is that a real attempt was made to prevent teaching to the test because it's really, they test the kid's understanding rather than just regurgitating facts that they get. And they're presented with problems, they're asked to solve these problems, and you can't really teach to that, and I think that brings a concern if you think you're a teacher and you're going to be evaluated on it. You know, how do you teach?
Well, that's an issue we'll have to look at going forward, I guess.
One last point on assessments. One of our initiatives for next year is we've purchased some new assessment tools that are going to eliminate a lot of the assessment testing. So next year, the Portsmouth students will actually see less time spent in assessments than they did this year.
Yeah, I did think the time seemed kind of excessive. We're almost out of time, which I knew we would be. I want to mention one thing, the last couple of shows, we've had your school principals on, and I got to tell you, those guys came shining through. I think they were all enthusiastic and they did a great job, you know, showing off their schools here. So give them a pat on the back for me, I thought it was great.
We appreciate you taking the time to showcase Portsmouth education, too.
Not at all, yeah, that's what we do here. And thank you both for coming, and I hope you come back sometime, we can talk about some of these other issues. That's it for me, Doug Smith. We'll see you next time on Portsmouth This Week.